If we could have a seat and get started, we're very tight on time. Thank you. We're going to start off by having each candidate, excuse me. Express himself. We're going to start off this time with a brief introduction from each candidate, okay? And we're going to start with Steve.
Thank you. My name is Steve Knudsen, 20-year Gwinnettian, four kids who all graduated. But Dan encouraged me to run, and I'm an empty nester with the opportunity to give back, and that's what my plan is.
Get going.
Hello. I'm Donald Mayberry for District.
In 1996, the reason I remember is because the Olympics were here. I followed them through elementary, middle school, and high school as a PTA officer. And then I stepped into a role as district director for Georgia PTA, which served all of Gwinnett County as well as outlying areas. In that time, I had the opportunity to work with parents to empower them on the importance of their involvement and engagement in the schools. Not just within my own school, but within all the schools. I worked with all in Gwinnett County and had the opportunity to charter over 30 of their PTAs. And the excitement that they have when they come together in community is second to none. And I hope that you all see that in me tonight.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Taylor, and I've lived in Gwinnett now for 17 years. I am married to an educator. I have two children, three children that are in education, two teachers and a school principal. I have worked in education for 22 years. I worked in corporate for 15 years, changed careers, and went into education. I've been in education now for over 22 years, and I've been a director of early childhood, a school principal, a counselor. And I've worked 15 years, the last 15 years, right here in Gwinnett County, public schools as a principal. I retired in 28, in 2016, and I continue to work as an educator consultant. I have my own consulting business. But I also know that education is something that I am totally dedicated to. It is what I care about. It is what I'm passionate about. I believe in all children, regardless of their background, their zip codes, whatever, that they deserve a high-quality education, and that's what I would like to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll do the quiz. We're going to do the quiz, all right? Okay. Okay, here it goes. Here's the questions. Okay? You got your buzzers ready? If a parent or community member wants to add an agenda item for the public school board meeting, they are required to submit their information for review to the board. A: One week before the meeting. B: Two weeks before the meeting. C: One week before the meeting. D: Anytime prior to setting the agenda before the meeting. That's incorrect. If a parent or community member wants to add an agenda item for the public school board meeting, they are required to submit their information for review to the board. One week, two weeks, one week before the... They moved that to one week, two, twice. Anytime prior to the setting of the agenda before the meeting. Anytime prior is correct. Yes. Anytime prior. Okay, this is true, false. Okay. Kindergartners cannot be given an off-campus suspension in Gwinnett County. True or false? Kindergartners cannot be given an off-campus suspension in Gwinnett County.
I'm going to say that's true.
It's false. Okay, the next question. School board service districts and school board electoral districts are the same. School board service districts and school board electoral districts are the same. That's... You're right. You're correct. Okay, next question. Gwinnett County has one of the longest-serving school board members in America. Okay. Board policies provide a process to correct erroneous discipline incidences from students with records without the assistance of an attorney.
True.
False. Board policy provides a process to correct erroneous disciplinary incidences from students' records without the assistance of an attorney. Okay. Moving on. Okay. Number one. Local and state governments across the country have implemented open checkbook policy programs to support openness and transparency. The programs allow taxpayers to access detailed information about expenditures, salaries, and contracts. GCPS has a budget of $2 billion. Do you support the open checkbook program for Gwinnett County Public Schools? Donald, you're first.
Yes, definitely. But also along with that, I mean, you can open up a budget for budgets, huge, too many knowledge at different times. You have the general fund, maybe the interest fund, the governance fund, so many different funds in there, so many different ways the money can go. Just opening it up to the public is almost useless. You'd almost have to provide some type of context with that money as well, in some ways, as to where the money actually went. So I'm in favor of opening it up and also giving some more context as to where the money actually went.
Steve?
I think that the important thing here is accountability, and without some sort of transparency, you can't have any accountability. So whether it's the open checkbook or some other type of program that allows for that transparency, I think is very important. The taxpayers have the right to know where their money's going. And so, again, whether it's specifically open checkbook or not, I'm not sure if that's the exact program that should be used. But I think accountability is key.
Yes, as a board member, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the constituents that we serve. So if the constituents would like to see that information, that should be open to them.
Yes, being the eighth person to answer this question, yes is the answer. There should be, because transparency is important. We are serving the public. These are taxpayers' data. And as has been stated before, accountability is what we need to focus on and make sure of with all of the funds in our budget. So definitely, I think it should be because of transparency.
Thank you. Gwinnett County struggles to close the achievement gap between students of color and white students. What policy enhancements are you interested in implementing to achieve equity in resource within each district and across the county so that students achieve at the same level? You have 90 seconds, and Steve, you're first.
I think it's important to think of this not just in terms of closing the gap, but in terms of closing the higher gap. We have to make sure that we're asking kids to excel and not ask other or look to take resources from others to make that possible. I think Gwinnett's done a pretty good job of that. The broad prize that they receive twice is largely based upon closing that gap. And so if they receive that national prize twice, they're doing a better job than all the other large school districts that are out there. So it's not that... It's not happening, but obviously, I think there can be improvement in all of that. I think we have to start thinking outside the box in some of those situations. I think a lot of times, the kids are coming to the school, and they already have a couple of strikes against them. And so it's not so much necessarily what's going on specifically in the school as some of the... A lot of times, the support outside the school. So I want to see how we work on some programs where we empower parents a little bit more, maybe even engage the faith community from a mentoring perspective. But I think there's some other things that we can do in terms of thinking outside the box to make sure that those kids are getting the right resources in order to achieve excellence.
One of the tenets of my platform is that of early childhood education. I think it's high time that Gwinnett explores and implements a early childhood program, meaning a pre-K program for our children. It has been researched time and time again, the benefits, the long-term benefits for early childhood. We know that when children are not ready for kindergarten, they have struggled in reading. And also, when they don't read by the end of third grade, they're four times more likely to drop out of school. So we have to look at this more from the front end and not just worry about, you know, continuously looking at the data, looking at us, and not really making any progress toward making adjustments or changes. So one of the things that I would like to do is that of early childhood education. And I think that one policy along with many others would start to address the needs for our children in closing the achievement gap.
Yes, there's several things we can do. Every student to succeed that calls for equity, not equality. So I think a lot of times we practice equality, where everyone is treated the same, given the same resources. But equity means that you're given what you need in order to succeed. And that's what we need to start doing. So we need to figure out where are the gaps and fill those gaps to make sure those students get what they need. Sometimes that may be counseling as well, some wraparound services to apply to these kids. Sometimes they need outside help. We need to make sure that the schools are actually bringing in the resources that the students need to make sure they succeed. I've been a mentor here with that county now for six years. I've worked with students all the time. I have a couple that have one big team now, Richard Mills. I've worked with... He's spelling, spelling line in the states. So we get together and we go over his homework. I go to his school on Fridays, and we sit down and go over his, go over all his assignments, make sure he's on track. So mentoring is one of those other things that's there, but the students have to have what they need. If you can't treat everybody the same, that's what we need to do, a needs assessment, to make sure the students are getting what they need.
I come at this from the vantage of a parent rather than an educator. And I foresee the problem with achievement gap correlating to the engagement gap. And I want to recognize Shawna over there, because I think she would agree, as a PTA council president, that we see fewer and fewer parents involved in the process of the school. In order to provide that intervention, if the parents can't do it, we're going to need to find resources that can, and programs like Donald participates in. Gwinnett County is implementing the Hispanic mentoring program coming up. I'm excited about that, because children need role models in order to aspire to that. And when we have effective role models, whether it's parents, teachers, community members, we have got to accept that responsibility.
Next question. Data suggests that the path to mass incarceration starts as early as elementary school. Please share your understanding of the school-to-prison pipeline and what you will do to keep kids in school and out of jail. You have 90 seconds. Carol, you can begin.
As I understand the school-to-prison pipeline, it's the inherent bias within the... I'm losing the word. It's the inherent bias in the disciplinary process that disproportionately affects students of color and special needs. I believe that we can all do a better job of understanding where people are coming from. One of the questions earlier about the guns and the teachers having guns, it's the same with students. We need to be nurturing and understand what they are experiencing in their lives, whether it's they haven't had anything to eat since the night before when they come to school. Discipline is there for a reason. We have an opportunity to work with children, to provide that for them. Thank you.
Steve?
I think that this issue oftentimes is systemic based upon what Wendy was talking about and those early years, the education that has to take place. The... I think that being married to an educator, one of the things that we talk about in terms of her classroom, she often says is, "I start with everything very, very tight. I can always loosen it up later." But I think one of the things that we need to think about in those early grades is being very consistent with how we apply discipline, so that by the time these situations become more serious, that the kids have an understanding. A lot of times, that, again, goes back to what I mentioned earlier, is that when they come in, they come in a lot of times without some of those role models, some of those other examples, just because of their family situation or lack of a family situation. I think we need to be understanding there. I think we need to figure out how to come alongside those kids in an understanding way. But I also believe that it's critical early that we stay disciplined and that we help these kids understand the why behind their education. I just met with the mayor of Lawrenceville, and she said one of the things she'd love to see with elementary schools is more field trips, just to give these kids more of a vision of what's available to them if they stay the course.
Carol?
Yes. Restorative justice, it tries to lower the impact some of these discipline issues have. So if you start trying some of those things, instead of going from zero to 100, and stop somewhere at 50, we would have a better chance. Also, something I want to make sure I get in here, because we hire SROs and we don't hire counselors or social workers. It's a combination of the two that we really need to do. We just... The governor just funded education for the first time in 15 years. And the first thing we did, we put 10 new SROs in elementary schools versus going out trying to find these social workers for the high schools. And that's a problem. But also on that same mind, there's something we can do as a school board. We can actually ask the community to come in and work with us. Groups such as Put All These Things Tonight, bring them in and work with us in the hiring of teachers, in the hiring of SROs, put them on the panels, ask to hire these teachers that are escalating these, what I call, tic-tac offenses to the ninth degree. And then maybe some of these things will happen. But sadly, now there's a little distrust between the community and the SROs, and that would help. We just brought in really, we have a voice in what's going on.
I just happened to have this today because it came in the mail. And this is Education Week, and the top of it says, "Disparities Grow for Students of Color: Federal Data Show." This is not just exclusive to Gwinnett. This is a national issue. And one of the things I can say is that policies are written, and we just have to know that policies are not color-coded and they're not culturally coded. We don't have policies and discipline codes that say, "For a black student, we will do this; for a white, and a Hispanic, or Asian, we will do this." The policies are written. The codes are there. So policies don't suspend. Policies are written. Procedures are designed to implement the policies. So what we have to look at is who implements those policies? So when we look at the practices across the county and the discretion that so many have in the policies as they're written, being a former principal, I had discretion as to how I would choose to discipline a child. And that range could be anything from talking to them, some restorative justice, to looking in the book, zero tolerance, this is nine days, I can give you nine days. But that's a choice. So I think we have to look more into that.
Next question. School discipline policies tend to be a continuum with restorative presence at the end, PBIS somewhere in the middle, and more traditional punitive measures at the opposite end. Where would you put yourself on the continuum and why? You have one minute. Donald, you're first.
And it all depends. You have heard, definitely heard this earlier, but I'm on the restorative justice side. But if it's, if it's a harsh offense, I mean, it has to be some punishment there. But if we start on the restorative justice side, we actually, we give the child an opportunity to be held accountable for what they've done, and make sure they stay into the classroom, stay in instructions, and they don't fall behind. Once we take them out of the classroom, and they start missing instructions, and then we get more discipline, they get further and further behind. That's what we do. So we need to do whatever we need to do to keep the child into the classroom, and that starts with restorative justice.
Wendy?
I would agree, using those three categories, that restorative justice on one extreme, PBIS in the middle, and punitive consequences at the very end. We actually, and I have actually, used all of them. And it is dependent upon what the infractions are. And as I said before, sometimes what happens is that there is such a wide range of how people understand the discipline codes to begin with. So there's ambiguity in that, and there's such wide discretion in what people can do to achieve that consequence. And then, you know, there is that punitive part. So I think the combination of it all, because it is all about establishing relationships with children. Once you establish relationships and you get to know the kids, I think that's when you can improve the situation.
Carol?
Has anyone looked at the discipline policy online and found it? It's actually 17 pages long, and you copy and paste it out so that you can get it. I think there's a fine line between student discipline and school safety. And to try and thumb-tack the placement of an individual, it's kind of difficult because of that. I find myself into that PBIS portion, because there are always going to be offenses that require that discipline, that you have to do it. Weapons in school, those types of things. And then there's opportunities to restorative justice as well. I think it's a sliding scale. It's important that we, as individuals, use our best judgment.
I think this is where personnel is absolutely key, because of what Wendy was saying. There are guidelines that are given. I would probably say that from my position, I would be more on the punitive side of things. I just know... But I also know that a lot of times, if you start, this kind of dovetails on my last answer, if you start early with an understanding of why the kids are there, they understand that, then you have the opportunity, they have more understanding. I also think that, of course, it comes down to personnel and perspective. But a lot of times, we're dealing with the issue of, is this just a silly kid issue, or is this willful disobedience? And so in some of those situations, you really have an opportunity to help guide and direct those kids. And, you know, like Carol said, a 17-page policy to figure out how that is, it really is up to the personnel and the situation to figure out what the best option is.
Thank you. Next question. Gwinnett County only hires police officers with experience in city-county law enforcement. Given that, what kind of special training should be required for school resource officers to transition to work with children? Donald, you're first.
Again, I think the counseling, it's just some type of counseling as well. Along with the social workers, I don't know exactly what type of courses the social workers actually take, but I think that should be done, because what's happening is when we go from zero to 100 right off the bat, that's a bad thing. I mean, somewhere in the middle, where they're actually, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, they're protecting, they're providing safety within the schools, but we shouldn't have them doing the discipline part. And that's where the counseling and social workers can actually really do a very large part. So whatever they, what type of courses they take, I recommend the same thing for the SRO.
I know that at one time, SROs in Gwinnett County were trained on more than just the criminal part of it. There was that of mentoring and going into schools and teaching and connecting and creating relationships in the schools. I'm not sure how much of that exists now, because there's such a frantic move to look at SROs as, you know, security, but also too many times, SROs become involved in discipline. I believe that SROs should focus on safety and security, and administrators should be more involved in the discipline. Too many times, officers are brought in to discipline students, and that's what makes it criminalized, and that's what takes it to the next level, where students end up in the juvenile justice system. And so I think training on de-escalating and training with, working with children and being involved with them and creating relationships, they should be visible, not just brought in when it's time for the breakup or fight, or if there's something going on. They should be there on the front end of it and create relationships with students as much and as often as possible.
One of the most effective SROs that I have ever come in contact with wasn't actually an SRO. He was the custodian at the high school. His name was Carl. There was even a Facebook page, Carl the Custodian. And the reason that I bring that up, because he was a member of that community. He was someone that the students respected. He was the first one to shake their hands as they graduated him across the stage, because he was an integral part of that community. And if we are to have SROs in the schools, which we do, they need to be a part of that community. And I go back to knowing your audience. How they interact with individuals as a police officer on the streets of Atlanta is going to be very different than a 15, 16-year-old or a middle schooler. So they need to know and be trained on the discipline, and not the discipline. I agree with what Wendy said. They need to be trained in the behaviors that they are going to be addressing in the schools that they are in.
This is very much a top-down issue. I think it goes to the hiring initially. And the word that came to mind as I was thinking about this is the word meekness. Meekness describes, a lot of people would equate it to weakness, but meekness is strength under control. And I think that when you look at the hiring process, and this is something that the board can have oversight into, obviously, they hire the people that hire the SROs, that I think it's very important that you look at not just the ability to be an SRO, but then what's the heart, what's the motivation behind it? What kind of attitude do they bring to it? Do they bring an attitude of meekness, which is one truly of caring for the students and their safety and security? But at the end of the day, they're also a part of trying to encourage and equip these kids to succeed. And so it's another key issue. It's personnel, and it's making sure that you have the right personnel in the right places. And I think if you have the right personnel, you probably don't need some of that training, but I think that training is always good. Anytime you're going to face diverse situations, it's... We had a fire when we had a house in Dallas, Texas, and I realized at the time, when I tried to throw water on an oil fire, that, you know, that that was, it would have been a bad thing. My wife understood that. I'm not a firefighter, so I wasn't trained in it. It would have been a bad thing. So we definitely need training to help all these different situations.
Thank you. Our next question. Gwinnett County Public School has a history of serving children with special Gwinnett County Public School has a history of serving children with special needs that has been found to be discriminatory. How do you plan to ensure that children with special needs have the support they need to be successful? How will you fight to ensure that all Gwinnett County children have what they need to succeed? And Carol, you're first.
As the last panel covered quite fully, there's legalities with that. The most inclusive is going to be the best. I go back to my days with PTA and parents. One of the people that I had the opportunity to work with is Jackie McNair. And she is a parent mentor with Gwinnett County. And she is, part of her job is to work with the parents of children for special needs. Back to that parent involvement, having the tools and the resources for them and empowering them to be their children's advocate is going to be the most inclusive way to get those children involved in the schools.
Well, with special needs, we know that there are federal guidelines that do determine how we are supposed to implement the education of children with special needs. And those special needs range from children who are gifted in special needs. They are a combination, you know? You can have an autistic child who is gifted. And you can have the moderately disabled child who needs extra attention because of their cognitive abilities. So it's a wide range when we're just talking about special needs. One of the things that we should ensure is that we do mainstream them as much as possible. They do not need to be in isolation. They should be included in the regular ed population as often as possible because guidelines do indicate that that's something we're supposed to be doing anyway. I do know that in Gwinnett, there are clusters of schools that have higher numbers of special needs children. And I think that should be redistributed more evenly across the district. There are children who are riding from one end of the district to another end. And in the district that I worked, at one point, it was over eleven percent of the students clustered in just that one area. So I think resources should be looked at and made sure that they're reallocated fairly and adequately across the county.
It comes back to personnel again. You've got the policies that the board puts in place. If there are federal and state guidelines, obviously, they have to be complied with. But then you have the teachers, the parents, and you've got to come up with a plan. I agree with all my colleagues here that the most inclusion is the best situation. But you have to weigh individual circumstances versus the overall good of the county, the schools, I mean, the students throughout the county. And I think one of the things that's always going to be that fine line balancing point is how do you take those limited resources and figure out how to achieve success and take care of those that have special needs? I think one of the things that's interesting about Gwinnett is it actually has about a percent, it has a higher percentage of special need kids than the surrounding counties. And I think part of that is because they do, families know they do a good job of taking care of their kids. And I also think that one of the things that we can do as the board is that we can continue to make sure that Gwinnett County Public Schools have heart. And that that heart means that we take care of the least that are among us.
Someone says the eighth person today to answer this. But I agree, there are federal guidelines we have to follow that they'll look at. So we have to deal with the students. One little personal thing about this, my wife and I were just discussing this. We have a friend who has autistic twins. And the twins, one was mainstream as much as possible, the other one couldn't, not so much. They actually had to travel. Well, the one who was mainstream as much as possible actually went to the prom last weekend. And it was a good thing. So that's just, that's one of those good stories. And you actually have to do the right thing. So I'd say it all depends on the students. There are limited resources, however. And I think you kind of try to do the best you can sometimes, but the student has to be transported to another school to meet those needs. And I just can't be helped.
Thank you.
Next one. We have cameras, we have buzzing systems, we have lockdown drills. And we do a lot of things that are already in place. We have our share up now of SROs, which I hope the focus is continuously on our safety and security. So teachers, adding that to their plate is definitely not a great idea. This week happens to be Teacher Appreciation Week, and I think they would appreciate not having that added to their plates, okay?
Dom?
No, me, no. Teachers have enough to do as it is. The schools, as I was saying, the schools have a tier approach now. They're approaching the safety through the cameras and the doors and all the drills we have. Armed teachers, it's going to be a disaster. If we don't arm teachers, we need to arm them more, treat them with more respect, give them more budgeting, maybe they, it's definitely not a good idea.
I had the opportunity this weekend to have this conversation with my sister-in-law, who is a teacher. And she shared with me a situation where they have the lockdowns, and then you've got to swipe your card to get in. Well, and so it happened that at a school event, someone was leaving and someone snuck in. And she actually walked in on someone going through her purse and was attempting to steal something from her purse. Imagine if there was a gun in there? So my answer with everyone else is no, teachers should not be armed.
Yeah, there was a pause there. I think being the eighth person to answer this tonight, you know, to go along with everybody, the answer would be no. I would say, though, that the jury in some ways is out. There are school systems that have implemented an opportunity for teachers to protect themselves, to provide for their own self-defense. And I don't know that I've seen in the media that any of those districts that have done that have fallen into complete and utter chaos. So I would just say that I think right now, the time is not right in where we are culturally. But I also think that I would say my, not to mandate, but to potentially allow voluntary carry for teachers is something that I might consider.
Okay, well, that ends our official questioning now. So we're going to start on the questions from the...
Those individual education plans of the students by grade, so that we look at the test scores and then really disaggregate the data so that we can focus on their particular weakness. But the EIP program can be successful. And one additional part that we have is to get Georgia Reading Program. It's becoming very successful. Thank you.
Okay, I'm having a hard time reading your writing, by the way, some of these questions. So I'm going to do the best I can. Merit-based pay has been found to be ineffective in increasing student success. It leads to teaching to the test and discourages teachers' cooperation. Do you support merit-based pay? Who would like to answer this question? Okay?
So Gwinnett County Public Schools is undergoing merit-based pay beginning next year. But they're implementing it in a way that's only bonuses. I don't think that merit-based pay is effective. I think it absolutely increases competition among teachers. And I also don't think that it rewards teachers for the right workload lift. It encourages teachers to seek the students who need the least so that their scores can look the best. And we want teachers to be encouraged to take our neediest and most challenged students. And we want to pay them for that work. So in so much as I can see a world where we invest our resources in students who have greater needs, those teachers might get a, what we would call a merit-based pay, but would be because they are taking on more responsibilities or they've shown leadership in the classroom and they're taking on more duties based on that and serving their kids better.
As well, not, the way we're doing it, we're forgetting the bonuses, but it's got to be a teacher against a teacher. And also, there's some metrics baked off in there where your class size, your class has to stay intact a certain percent. And that's kind of going against, it's going against, it's got to hurt some of the teachers in some of the Title I schools, where their classrooms may be more trained. So those teachers won't actually get bonuses. Then no one wants to go down and teach at the Title I school. So that's a pretty big gap.
Thank you. Okay, what is your position regarding reduced class size as a means of addressing the emotional and social needs of the students as well as contributing to their intellectual development? So this is about class size.
I would say...
She had a hand up first. At the area school board meetings, the superintendent was pretty specific because that question came up a lot from the predominantly education-based audience. It was mostly people from the schools that were there. And they asked about reducing class sizes specifically in relation to the increase in funding that we were getting this year. And the superintendent pointed out that it takes between thirty-four and thirty-six million dollars to reduce class size by one across the whole county. So clearly, that's not going to happen when we just get a bump of seventeen million this one year. It's an effective means to achieve everything you said. We just need to hide the funds for it. And my solution would be to, as a member of the school board, is to always fight for that fully funded education. They keep trying to take it away. They never fully funded it. So how can we implement it in its schools without the full funding? Steve, you want to answer?
Yeah, I was going to make the same point, that I think in some of these schools that are struggling, where we have a situation where we're trying to close that gap, I think smaller class size is definitely a part of that. Donald mentioned the idea of equality versus equity. And I think that if we're trying to achieve excellence in education, that we need to look, again, outside the box in some of these ways and, like Carol said, find some money. Because I do think that smaller class size does lead to better results.
Next question.
Can I respond to that question?
Yes.
Okay. So the research doesn't actually corroborate that, that class size reduction improves student achievement, until you get to a place where you're cutting class size in half. And it's so expensive that I think we can pursue other means to better address student need in class sizes that are substantially large, above twenty. I think that there just needs to be more support within those classes so that teachers can take advantage of the space and the different student needs at the same time. If that's a curriculum that allows them to do certain things in certain parts of their classroom with certain kids, that's what I've seen work well. But we'll never see a world where we can get class size down to what it really needs to be, which is like eight or nine students, and you'd be able to see those real returns on the reduction.
You've got to remember that even though we're getting the additional eighteen or nineteen with the QB funding, that's one year. We've gone over a decade where we haven't been fully funded, to the tune of over nine hundred million dollars that the Gwinnett school system has not received. You've got to also remember that in Gwinnett, with the funding, that it's taxpayer-based. So there's only finite amount of dollars that we can use. Remember that. And also, in Gwinnett, on average, we teach one out of every ten kids statewide. Hundred and eighty thousand, based on about one point seven million statewide. Thank you.
I'll just, I'll tie onto that one there. One of the things we have to do when we first get into office is look at the budget. That's one of our primary duties. So at this point in time, we can come with a lot of wonderful policies and keep going at them. But we really can't enact anything because we don't have the funding. We have to get in there day one, start looking at the budget, taking it apart. We have people who've been in that office now for twenty-four years and are not running. We don't know what's in the budget. We never have, we've never really looked at it at a transactional level. If you look online and look at the budget, they'll give you expenses. POs rolling up over two thousand dollars, that's about as close as you can get to the actual thing. You need to look at the budget. Maybe there's something there, maybe there is. We really don't know what's in that journal, but, thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, so next question. Earlier this year, school year, my son received a Gwinnett County Public School approved publication from the Gwinnett Daily Post on the topic of colonization. I am concerned with how histories such as colonization is being taught without respect to diversity in the county. How will you ensure that our school curriculum is historically accurate and not whitewashed and inclusive?
One thing I think is very, very important, and I can't stress this enough, is that parents need to be a part of that process. They are invited every year, and I don't think that's actually advertised well enough when they look at the curriculum. But parents are, should be a part of looking at the curriculum along with other staff, teachers, maybe even even students. But we need the community involved in really looking at curriculum to ensure that things are equitable.
Our history has not been perfect, without a doubt. It has not been perfect. We have to teach that. Our kids need to understand what that history's been so that we don't repeat it. We also have to have these books and things that are available. We have to be able to have access to them other than the small window of time that the county currently gives to go look at those things. Past that, past those few weeks, they're locked up. You can't get to them if you want to.
I would add to that and say that if I were an educator teaching a history class and I was using a book that wasn't appropriate, you should have a problem with that. So if the educator is not bringing it to, you know, someone's attention, even if the parents miss it, because parents can miss things sometimes. We do live in Gwinnett County in Atlanta where traffic is heavy, and we can't get there every day. So, you know, again, as educators, we have a responsibility to make sure we adopt the textbooks that are accurate. So we can't put it all back on the parents, not all of the time. They should be a part of the process. But as an educator, if you went to school to teach social studies and you know this book is not accurate, then you need to go back to your college and tell them that they didn't teach you right.
I would just add that my student experience led me to understand just how much I missed in terms of the coverage of colonization in our social studies curriculum. Our fourth grade and eighth grade at the time, Georgia Studies textbooks described life on the plantation as pleasant. You can Google image that and find all types of, you know, receipts for that. And I mean, to be honest, we know that there is very well-researched curricula out there that cover social studies and infused literacy and talk about the perils of our country and engage students in a way so that they're able to critically think about the world that they want to see. And we can just do a better job at understanding that, you know, certain textbooks do a terrible job of that and certain ones are much better. And teachers should have a voice in that, and parents should have a voice in that, and students should have a voice in that.
One thing that can be done, one of my roles in the jury department of education was dealing with textbooks. And now it's all done at local, what we call local control level, House Code 739. It does mandate supposedly that all the instruction materials that are up for adoption be put online for parents to be able to see. And if you can look online and see those materials, and whether the systems are doing that, putting them online is a different facet, but they should be doing that. And when I taught AP History, one of the most effective ways I found to talk was I taught from the current history and I taught backwards. And made it relevant to the contents. These kids don't know the wrong radius and stuff like that. It's not relevant to them. We've got to start our current history and work backwards sometime.
No, you need to get rid of common core.
Has everybody said their piece?
It's actually, it's very clear on this. It says that the board and the school district is supposed to reach out to the community, not only the parents. But the organizations that are putting on this tonight, reach out to staff, reach out to forces, reach out to community leaders, pull those folks in and get their opinion. It's supposed to be deliberate and strategic. You're not supposed to wait on them to come to you. You're not supposed to go back to the boardroom, make a decision about four or five people, come out and tell the public what was done. You're supposed to have the community in the boardroom with you making those decisions. If that happens, then we're okay. But what's happening now, that's not happening. We're telling the parents, saying, do it. This is a community effort that the board needs to be leading.
So Ben said what they wanted to say? Okay, next question.
I was going to, sorry, I was going to add to that, that I've actually participated in curriculum review and as a parent, and I kind of consider myself okay about a lot of things. It's not an easy process to read those books and to correlate them to the AKS and understand what it is that you're, what you're actually even trying to do. You're kind of throwing it up into the wind and picking the worst choice, the best, the best of the worst sometimes. And we need to do a better job of explaining those standards and what the curriculum is about and educating parents what they're actually doing when they do that.
Anybody else want to say anything? Next question then. Students are coming to school with several unmet needs negatively impact attendance. What are some of the ways you will address attendance concerns with the help of support services in the schools? Please describe.
Well, I think, you know, for most school systems, that's already addressed. You have only so many accesses you can have. And then you get the social worker involved. That's a lot of what student support services are supposed to do, is address the attendance, the lack of attendance of students and find out why, what are the barriers to them getting to school? If they're homeless, you have the McKinney Bean Act. So there are, there are already a number of things in place. I think sometimes what happens is that the policies that are already in place for some of these things aren't being carried out in some of the local school systems, which is a local building issue.
Okay, Mary, I was just...
You saw she had a hand up?
As far as attendance, you're absolutely right. One of the things that I definitely did when I was a school building principal was that of a lot of preventive talking with, before children are out ten days, don't wait till they're out ten days to start getting concerned as to where they are. So after two days, teachers would call the parent and we're concerned, we just want to know how your child is doing, when will they be back in school? We know that attendance is a major problem and especially, I'm sure, when they're older and they're just cutting classes or just not showing up. But we have to remember that we, as the adults in our schools, we need to engage our children more. If they're engaged, they are learning and they want to learn and they want to be at school. So we have to make sure that that is something we're looking at as well, prevention.
One thing that Mary had students recently did, they actually got, again, they got the community involved, not only the community, but business leaders. They were able to provide round-round services for the kids. They brought in academic support, they brought in behavioral support, they actually brought in community support. They fed the kids, they told the kids, they made sure they had the, they had the resources that they needed so they could actually come to school and be productive. This wasn't something the school system did. This was something that the community got together and they started a whole other resource center for those kids that were in need. So there are things that we can do, we just need to be proactive without actually doing...
I would just add that there are some times when students' needs are the reasons that prevent them from being in school, and there are other times when it's not. And the best way to figure it out is just ask the kids. Ask them what's going on.
All right, next question. I have been an educator in Gwinnett County for seventeen years. I, as well as other employees, have experienced the broad, the board having a death ear toward teacher complaints regarding discrimination within the system. If elected, what will you do to differently address discrimination of all forms, employees with disabilities, race, et cetera?
Major part of my platform is that, being an advocate for teachers. I've worked with hundreds and hundreds of teachers over time. And I know that there is a carved out period of time that the TAC, a Teachers Advisory Committee, addresses the board with their needs. And I've had teachers to come back and actually say they do feel that it's just a show, that it doesn't actually go anywhere, that they're not listened to and that their needs are not truly addressed. But they just have that opportunity to talk and have been even described sometimes as just complaint. I think teachers have a lot on their plate. They feel frustrated, they feel overworked and underpaid. And we need to look at elevating their pay scale first and foremost because they're not necessarily the highest paid in the, in the area. So I think that's one of the things we need to look at. Thank you.
So the elephant in the room is that we don't pay our teachers as much as they're deserved because we don't actually believe in them. We think that our leadership problems, or sorry, we think that our leadership should handle the problems that teachers address. And so then we think that the best way to address that is by paying our leadership more. And I think we need to interrogate that whole structure. And so I can't, I mean, I see an issue where the superintendent makes over five hundred thousand dollars a year to pay for their basic needs. And we oftentimes try to justify that with, oh, but you have all these benefits and you have all of these other things. And like no other sector tries to make their employees feel better by talking about their benefits when it's actually their basic pay that is not meeting their needs. So we should just interrogate our budget and figure out if what we're prioritizing in terms of leadership is actually servicing the end goal of delivering quality education for kids and otherwise we can tear it to bits more.
All right, next question. Are concepts like those used at the Ron Clark Academy an example of thinking outside the box? Would you support these techniques where appropriate?
You know, a lot of this comes back to that, that question of fiscal responsibility and how do you do that? I've been to the Ron Clark Academy. I've, I've taken a tour of it. I've, I've met with some of those teachers and it is a phenomenal organization that, that does phenomenal work. Can we implement what they do there across Gwinnett County? I'm not sure. Again, it all comes back to how we have to look at the budget, create our priorities, and go from there. I, I will say that one of the things that the Ron Clark Academy does as an ongoing educational institution is train teachers. And now it's not, it's certainly not inexpensive to go be trained at the Ron Clark Academy. So that's something that, that maybe there's a way to, to help figure out how to adapt what they're doing in Gwinnett County. But it surely is a beacon of what can be, can be done.
I also believe that one of the things we need to address in this county is that of cultural competence. That is something, we know that over twenty, over the past twenty years, this county has changed in its demographic. That's, that's not a secret. I think people can just look at that. I did my dissertation on teachers' perception of using culturally responsive teaching strategies. I had that actually implemented by having a workshop and having someone from the outside come in and train the teachers. The Ron Clark Academy is wonderful. I've seen it, I've read about it, we actually studied it. But it is too, a lot of it is, they're smaller schools, they have a lot of resources. And Gwinnett, at one point, my school had sixteen hundred children at it. So we have large school systems. I think that we just need to do a better job of culturally responsive teaching strategies and making this whole county more culturally competent.
This, this question had a part to it. How do we increase the number of male teachers?
You know, this is, this is always an interesting question because on the one hand, we say, are we talking about blackmail? What kind of males are we talking about? Let's, let's be, let's be clear here first. Because part of the problem is we say that, you know, students aren't going into education because they're going into the technical careers. So I guess we have to go back to what he said and flip it and pay the teachers' students more so we can attract some male students, we can make a living as a support factor. If we're looking at getting more students of color, more male teachers of color, well, then somehow we have to do something about the school prison pipeline so we can get them out of school and get them into college. So there, there are a lot of variables that play into, into this question because we always send our, we always send our kids to do better than we did. And if we're, if we are teaching, and my son can be a doctor and make, you know, three hundred and some thousand dollars as a cardiologist, I'm going to tell him to go be a cardiologist. So there, I think there are many things that we have to do in terms of how much we pay the teachers and how we educate our current kids that are coming through the system and point them towards education.